Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick. Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Uh, I'd like for you, everyone to stand and join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where the citizens may speak on county government usually limited to three minutes and pertaining to items not on today's agenda.
Next week, there will be no meeting.
Please state your name and your address, please.
Uh, same as it was the last time, Norman Mantle, Salina, Kansas. Uh, there's no meeting, I understand, next week because you're going to a county commissioners' meeting. I brought this suggestion up before, suggested to your association. Why don't you record that meeting and just, that way only one person from the county would be going. They could get the information, then come back with that video, then you could play it for all of the commissioners in the meeting. You could save money. We would be spending no money on hotels, meals, mileage. But I guess we don't want to save any money, do we? Also, you need to record these meetings for future references. Statements have been made in either out here or in there at the study session. And some, the statement was made, well, I never heard it. Another person says, I heard it. You could go back and review it for clarity, saying, this was stated this way. That's why we're having so much confusion.
Thank you. Seeing no one else, I'll bring it back to the, uh, commission for, uh, regular business. And I will state before, uh, we approve the agenda that there has been an item added to, uh, item number nine, which will be an emergency management update on, on, uh, the flooding possibilities and, and what's really going on with the weather. So, that having been said, uh, clerk will read, uh, item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
Second. It's been moved in second that we approve today's agenda as stated. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number two.
Approval of county commission many minutes for September twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of September twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteen as presented.
Second. Been moved in second that we approve, uh, the county commission meeting minutes for September twenty-fifth, twenty-eighteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number three.
Approval of county commission minutes for October second, twenty-eighteen.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of October second, twenty-eighteen as presented.
Second. Been moved in second that we approve, uh, that we accept the county commission minutes of, uh, October second, twenty-eighteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Item number four.
Proclamation declaring October twenty-eighteen as Down Syndrome Awareness Month. Presented by Jamie Allen County Clerk. County of Saline Commissioners' proclamation. Whereas approximately one in every eight hundred children are born with Down Syndrome, representing approximately five thousand births per year in the United States. And while whereas, whilst research and early intervention have resulted in dramatic improvements in the lifespan and potential of those who are affected, more investigation is needed in the causes and treatment of Down Syndrome. And whereas people with Down Syndrome possess a wide range of abilities and are active participants in educational, occupational, social, and recreational circles of the community. And whereas developed by the National Down Syndrome Society in nineteen ninety-five, the Body Wa- Buddy Walk is an annual event in cities across Kansas and the, and the national, and the nation celebrating the accomplishments of children and adults with Down Syndrome. And whereas the North Central Kansas Down Syndrome Society has supported families who have children with Down Syndrome and desires to increase the support network and support groups of those with Down Syndrome across our state. And whereas the goal of the Buddy Walk is to promote increased understanding and acceptance of people with Down Syndrome while raising funds for scientific research into the causes and treatments and family support. Now therefore, we, as commissioners of Saline County, do hereby proclaim October twenty-eighteen as Down Syndrome Awareness Month throughout the county and encourage all of Saline County to work together to promote awareness of Down Syndrome and to celebrate the accomplishments of individuals and their families.
Uh, if I recall, last week we announced that there would be a Down Syndrome Walk, uh, I believe that's in Clyde, Kansas, this Sunday. Anybody have any of the follow, the information on that?
Yeah.
Go ahead and state that for us, please.
Yeah, the, uh, One Mile Fifteenth Annual Buddy Walk hosted by the Nash, North Central Kansas Down Syndrome Society will take place Sunday, October seventh. It's at Clyde City Park in Clyde, Kansas.
All right. Well, thank you for the, the presentation. Uh, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we declare October two thousand eighteen as Down Syndrome Awareness Month.
Second. I've been moved in second that we, uh, declare October eighteenth, October twenty-eighteen as Down Syndrome Awareness Month. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll move on to item number five.
RFA one-nine-two-dash-eighteen, Community Development Block Grant Application. Rosie Walters, Senior Services Director.
Morning, Rosie.
Good morning. Good morning. Um, Senior Services is requesting commission approval to submit the application for two thousand nineteen Community Development Block Grant Funds in the amount of one hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven, with a county match of sixty thousand, one eighty-nine. And this is an application that was developed with David Neal, the Planning and Zoning Director, Dwayne Grace, and Johnny Adam with A Plus Architectural and Construction Services. The request includes, um, total reconstruction of the two dining room bathrooms on that main floor, um, changing all the fixtures on all the bathrooms to a higher model, and then, um, the plumbing that goes in those restrooms, and then, um, restoring the roof, or replacing the roof. And the advisory council did meet on September twenty-eighth and they did review and approve. So today I'm asking for commission approval.
Okay, and the budget impact, let's see, that comes from the contingency funds that are set aside for the senior services, is that correct?
It would be, uh, CIP, capital improvement, so, money set aside, yes.
Okay, are there, uh, further questions of, of, uh, the commission to the staff?
The, the way that you just stated that, though, was is that, uh, the hundred and twenty thousand dollars with our matching deal is sixty thousand dollars. The grant is actually for sixty thousand dollars, one hundred and eighty-nine, is that correct?
No, that, the actual grant is one hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven, but it re- does require a match. So I'm asking the county today for half of that, which is sixty thousand, one eighty-nine. And the, the rest of the grant, the CDBG funds would fund the difference. So this is the application to fund that difference.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the, uh, staff. I think it's, uh, obviously very important to, to update our facility over there. Uh, we've gotten into this business of senior services and, uh, we need to make our facilities, uh, equitable and, and feasible to use for these senior citizens and, uh, so I think it's, uh, money well spent in the long run, so.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move we submit the Kansas Small Cities Program Community Development Block Grant Application as requested.
Second. Uh, it's been moved in second that we approve RFA one-nine-two-dash-eighteen for a Community Development Block, Block Grant Application. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries, four-zero.
Thank you.
Item number six.
RFA one-nine-oh-dash-eighteen, Aetna Contract, Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
Good morning, Jason.
Morning, Commissioners. Do you have, uh, in front of you, the health insurance company, Aetna, will be replacing AmeriGroup as one of the three providers under the Can Care system for Medicaid. And that goes into effect January first. Um, as such, the Health Department must enter into a contract with Aetna to providing, uh, continue providing care for those that are serviced under Can Care. And this is required of all providers, hospital, long-term care, et cetera, that, uh, participate in Can Care across the state. Alternatives, accept the contract as proposed, um, send back for questions or refuse the contract. Uh, County Councilor has reviewed this contract and has stated there's no issues that he sees with it. Uh, staff recommends signing the contract with Aetna to avoid any interruptions in care or revenue, uh, come January twenty-first and no partic- or anticipated budgetary impact at this time.
So, uh, in other words, the four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, four hundred and six, four hundred and nineteen, four hundred and sixty-three dollars would come totally from, from the grant?
We're looking at the Aetna contract, sir. That's the WIC application, that's the next, or the WIC grant, that's the next, uh, item on there.
I'm sorry. Did get out of order. Okay.
This is just some house cleaning then and.
It is, since the state decided to go from using AmeriGroup as one of the three providers to Aetna, this is just one of the formalities so that we can continue providing care as to have the contract with Aetna now.
Very good. Any further questions or comments? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we sign the contract with Aetna as requested by staff.
Second the motion. It's been moved in second that we approve RFA one-ninety-dash-eighteen for an Aetna contract. Is there any further questions or comments? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Now we'll move to item number seven that I was out of control on.
RFA number one-nine-one-dash-eighteen, WIC Grant Application, Jason Tiller, Health Department Director.
All right, Jason, you're on again.
Yes, sir. Um, one thing I just noticed on here, this says grant application. We've already, uh, this is our standard annual WIC contract that we get each year for the WIC grant. So this is actually the contract, not the application.
That's where I was getting confused, I think. So we're, as far as the request for action, this is not a grant application.
No, this is the grant contract.
Do we need to clarify this within, clean up our paperwork then, Rita?
I think it's only on your agenda, so I think you're okay.
Well, it's, it's right here on my request for action. At least that's how I'm reading it.
Uh, it's, uh.
Yes, well.
It's, it says contract.
Annual contract.
It's annual contract.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Tiller? Not hearing none, I'll bring it back to the, uh, or excuse me, is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve and sign the WIC grant as requested by staff.
Second. Been moved in second that we approve RFA one-ninety-one-dash-eighteen for a WIC grant app, uh, contract instead of a grant application, contract. That's where I'm, continue to lose track. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll move on to, um, item number eight.
Resolution eighteen dash twenty-two fifty-eight, Disaster Declaration, Hannah Stanbaugh, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning. Commissioners, this is obviously in addition to our agenda today, but this is resolution eighteen dash twenty-two fifty-eight and proclamation, for proclamation of a state of local disaster for Saline County, Kansas. Whereas on the ninth, uh, day of October twenty-eighteen, the Board of County Commissioners of Saline County, Kansas finds that certain conditions have caused or eminently threaten to cause widespread or severe damage, injury, or loss of life, or property in a disaster proportion pursuant to.
Hold up a second, Hannah.
Then you need to adjust your microphone down a little bit maybe.
Is that better? Is that better?
Okay, yeah.
There we go. Would you like me to start over?
Uh, why don't you please?
Okay, um, Commissioners, uh, this is for, uh, resolution eighteen dash twenty-two fifty-eight and proclamation, for proclamation of a state of local disaster for Saline County, Kansas. Whereas on the ninth day of October twenty-eighteen, the Board of County Commissioners of Saline County, Kansas, finds that certain conditions have caused or eminently threatened to cause widespread or severe damage, injury, or loss of life, or property in disaster proportion and pursuant to KSA forty-eight dash nine thirty-two, and proclaim that a state of local disaster emergency exists in Saline County, Kansas. And whereas such flooding conditions have created obstructions or will create obstructions which endanger health, safety, and welfare of persons and property within the border of Saline County, Kansas. Now therefore, be it resolved that by the Board of County Commissioners of Saline County, Kansas, does hereby proclaim that a state of local disaster emergency exists. It is further resolved that the area covered by this resolution proclamation includes the entire area of Saline County, Kansas, and all cities or townships contained therein. Be there further resolved that this resolution shall remain in effect for a period of seven days unless terminated earlier or renewed by consent of the governing body adopted by the Board of County Commissioners this ninth day of October twenty-eighteen. Um, just to kind of give you a, um, update as far as what it is that we are expecting. Um, obviously, we've seen quite a bit of rain the last few days that has created some issues with, uh, the potential for flooding. This is a current snapshot of our river gauges, uh, at the Mulberry, and then also I've got some images of the Smoky Hill River, too. Um, this is one site that we are, uh, very concerned with at Mulberry. Um, flood stage on this particular river is twenty-four feet. It is forecasted, um, to rise near twenty-seven point four feet by early Wednesday morning, um, and then fall below, back below flood stages by late Wednesday morning. Um, the impact that we possibly could see at twenty-seven point four feet, uh, the Mulberry Creek can expand to a half a mile to one mile wide, um, along Halsted Road and a half mile north of the creek's gauge site can take on up to two feet of water. Additionally, State Street west of I-one-thirty-five begins to flood in the areas of Thomas Park on North Ninth Street, and the northern end of Salina is experienced, or could experience flooding. Um, we've been in contact with the City of Salina Public Works Department. They are evaluating conditions. There was a press release that was issued yesterday about the potential of road closings at eight o'clock this morning. Those have been held back, um, until we can evaluate things. We didn't get near as much, uh, moisture overnight as what we were expecting. Um, so you can see on this particular gauge that, that it looks like the river's going down, um, but it will be creeping its way back up based off of all of the water that we have to the west of us that is coming, uh, down. So, uh, we are just constantly evaluating those particular areas for road closures that are, that are, would be eminently have to happen, and mainly for the safety and sake of, of people to keep them out of areas that are hazardous. The second site that has, um, concerns is out by, um, the area of New Cambria. This is a Smoky Hill River that is, um, flood stage on this particular river is twenty-seven feet and we are looking at for it to continue to rise to near thirty-one point nine feet by early Wednesday afternoon. And then the river to fall below flood stage by Thursday afternoon. The impact at thirty-one feet out by New Cambria is all roads leading into New Cambria become flooded. Old Highway forty between Marymount Road and Whitmore Road is closed due to floodwaters. Those are the impacts that we have the potential of seeing. Um, you can see from this site that, uh, the river is on its way up. Um, we still have a little bit of room left in that, in the riverbanks to hold some more, but again, we've got potential for water, um, not only today, but into the evening hours.
So old forty is not closed, right?
It is not. We do not have any roads that are closed right now. Um, we are just looking at the potential of, of that. And then the last site is the Smoky Hill River near Mentor. Um, again, this site is, uh, towards the southern end of the county, um, we are experiencing, or have the potential to experience minor flooding with a crest of about twenty-one point seven, uh, feet. Um, so the impacts in this particular area aren't as great, however, there is still the potential for some minor flooding. So the proclamation that has been put in front of you today is really very precautionary. Um, what it does is certainly helps with declaring the fact that, that we do have a serious potential of having some major issues. Uh, the hydraulics that I talked to with the National Weather Service last night basically compared some of these river levels to two thousand and seven, if anybody was around in two thousand and seven to know what those impacts look like, especially in the northern end of Salina and then out by New Cambria. So we certainly have the potential, and we really hope that it doesn't happen. Um, but the proclamation that has been brought in front, in front of you today certainly will help with, um, providing us with, um, the activation of our emergency operations plan.
So a proclamation is, is clearly informing us that, uh, that the potential is, is available. It's, it's not, or gonna, imminent that it's gonna happen probably. But, so there's nothing for us to do at this time other than, uh, accept the proclamation, is that correct?
That is correct. So by signing the proclamation, that activates our emergency operations plan that we have designated for the county. Um, it also certainly puts into, to motion some other things as well, the potential for us to activate the mutual aid agreements that we have. Um, it certainly gives us direct access to state, um, and other resources if by chance we would happen to need those. So it certainly is just, uh, something that certainly can help put things into motion a lot faster, um, that we have just, that we have declared that there is a potential for imminent flooding.
Very good. Uh, is there questions of Hannah? Comments from the staff, or from the commission?
And this will last for a week period, correct?
Yes, so disaster declarations are automatically in effect for seven days. Our hope is that we will see the rivers fall rapidly after they rise, um, but obviously the effects of, um, water have a lasting potential. So this will get us through at least seven days.
And reevaluate it this time next week?
Yes, that is correct, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. No further questions. I'll bring it back to the, uh, to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we proclaim October ninth, twenty-eighteen as a state and local disaster for Saline County to remain in effect for seven days.
Second the motion. It's been moved in second that we proclaim October ninth, twenty-eighteen as a state and local disaster for Saline County to remain in effect for seven days. This is resolution eighteen days, twenty-two fifty-eight, uh, disaster declaration. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. We'll move to item number nine.
Emergency Management Update, Hannah Stanbaugh, Emergency Management Director.
Morning again, Hannah.
Okay, so this is, uh, our quarterly update for the months of July, August, and September of twenty-eighteen. So we kind of experienced a little wave of, of interesting weather, um, with July being extreme heat, August being cooler temperatures, and the beginning of September full of lots of moisture. Um, this was obviously for this week, but, uh, even we had about, uh, five inches of precipitation that we saw in the month of September, which was really good. And on average, we've seen about twenty point seventy-nine inches of precipitation, but that still does leave us behind, um, uh, by, on September thirtieth, by about six and a half inches. So, uh, drought conditions have obviously greatly improved from, from the last quarterly report, but there's still a portion in the southeast part of our county that is in the abnormally dry category. I have a feeling that's gonna be updated here pretty rapidly. So looking in the months to come, there's obviously a large possibility of continuing to seeing, um, above normal temperatures and slightly, uh, slight chance of above normal precipitation kind of moving into our winter months. And the prediction is what they call an El Nino winter. Um, so it really kind of depends on where the jet stream all sets up, but it certainly has the potential to bring more moisture to the southern half of the United States. So we'll see what Mother Nature brings us in the form of precipitation coming, uh, for the winter. Um, for emergency management updates, we've had, uh, pretty busy, we've been pretty busy over the last, uh, few months. Uh, July fourth is always a nerve-wracking time for us, uh, just with the potential of, um, fires due to fireworks, but luckily we only had three calls, uh, during that time period where fireworks are allowed to be shot off that were fireworks related and quickly, uh, taken care of. So that was obviously really nice. Um, also in the month of July, we took possession of our new, um, SUV that's already been proven to be an excellent, uh, purchase and very handy for carrying around all the stuff that we need to carry around, especially actually in the last few days. Um, lastly, our staff had been attending a series of courses for a completion of a course called Foundations of Emergency Management that has been, um, completed. Um, there were four different sessions that were held throughout the year and certificates for completion have been, um, obtained. We, uh, worked with all of our different, um, responding partners to build what we call an incident action plan for the Smoky Hill River Festival, um, as well as for the Tri Rivers Fair. And what it is, is really a document that we put together that has all types of emergency contact information, scheduling information of all of the fire department, police department. Um, it definitely proved to be a very successful document that could be referenced in the heat of, you know, something happening. Uh, so we're gonna continue to, to exercise building those pre-plans for major, large events like that. Um, the other big thing that, uh, we, uh, had this last quarter was September eleventh through the fourteenth, we attended our annual Kansas Emergency Management Conference in Topeka. Um, we were fortunate to receive some training from the Naval Postgraduate School on crisis communications and trends of disasters as well as futures of disasters. So both Bernie and I came back home with our brains full of ideas and knowledge and just a wonderful experience. Um, the conference is always, uh, is always just a great time. Um, so also with that, um, myself was awarded the twenty-eighteen Kansas Emergency Management Outstanding Service Award. And that will actually be brought to the commission on the twenty-third of October for a formal presentation. So it was a great, um, award to receive for all of the hard work that I've done across the state. But not only is it an award for myself, it's for my office and for this county, so.
Well, congratulations on that.
Thank you very much. Um, we also were very proud to, uh, work with, uh, three Kansas Wesleyan students who are emergency management majors. They came and they interned at our conference. Obviously, this is the second year that we've done that and it's actually proven to be an absolutely wonderful experience for them to get to know, um, all the emergency management professionals across the state. So we will love to continue working with them for that. Um, the other, uh, exciting thing that we were able to do is participation with the Boy Scouts Annual Campery. Both Bernie and I went out to Crisis City on a Saturday and helped with, uh, over a hundred scouts that were able to obtain their merit badge for, uh, emergency preparedness, and that's always a fun event. Moving on to our fire districts, um, I think with the moisture, it really kept a lot of their call loads down. Um, probably the largest fires that we had were in result of what, lightning strikes with hay bales, um, but nothing really of, of major concern. Um, probably the, the largest that we had was on July seventeenth, we had a garage slash structure fire in the town of Smol, in which Fire District Number Six and Fire District Number Two responded to. So total calls for fire, for the fire districts in July, we only have nine calls in August. There were seventeen. And September, a total of twelve, which those numbers are actually down from previous years, so we like to see that, obviously. Um, so subject to any questions that you have, that is my quarterly report for emergency management and rural fire.
I have no questions. I just want to say, uh, again, congratulations on the award that your department has, is being presented here shortly. And, uh, uh, your office seems to be in good shape, and we appreciate your efforts, so.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions from the commission? All right, we accept your, uh, report as presented. That is the end of our, uh, meeting today. Are, is there any, uh, other business to be addressed at this time? I will point out that, uh, Mr. Mantle was correct. Uh, we will be off spending county money at, at the KAC, uh, annual state meeting next week in Topeka, so therefore there will be no meeting as a cor- as, because, uh, a quorum will not be able to be present. So our next meeting would then be, uh, October the twenty-third? I believe that's correct. Well, it's, two weeks from today will be the next county committee, we'll put it that way, so.
And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to add to that situation there is just to, to let Norman know is that it's just not only for county commissioners, it's for all departments of the, the Kansas counties. And so the nice thing about it getting together is to find out what other counties are doing in certain situations. Uh, I know that a lot of people feel that, that it might be a waste of money, but the knowledge base that you get from attending all the different. but the knowledge base that you get from attending all the different conferences that are there, that are provided, is invaluable. So it's a whole scope of different things and people networking together that you come back with a whole brand-new idea, and there's a lot of vendors there that you get to see new products, find out what is happening and what's available. So it, it is a, we spend a little money to do this, and I think it's an invaluable few days to go learn. So I just wanted to throw that out.
Are there any other announcements? Hearing none, I will take the motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second that today's meeting will be adjourned. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? We're adjourned. We will.